Buddy.
All right. Okay. All right, I'd like to bring this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Badalotto.
Here.
Mr. Eftikhar. Mr. Pico.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Mr. Yagnam.
Here.
Mrs. Harold.
Here.
Mrs. Sharfstein. We have a call.
Sunshine Law Statement. This is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled The Open Meeting, the Open Public Meetings Act. Stanhope Board of Education located at 24 Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the office of the Stanhope Borough of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald and the municipal clerk of the borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School, and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, set forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. Mission Statement. The Stanhope School District in partnership with the community commits to provide a quality, comprehensive education for all learners with equal emphasis on academic excellence and citizenship through values, respect, and service. Vision Statement. Our vision is to inspire and cultivate a community of innovative, curious, compassionate, and globally-minded learners equipped with knowledge, problem-solving skills, and the ability to persevere to make a positive impact on society and shape a better future. An executive session will be held for the purpose of student confidentiality. Formal action may be taken. We have one presentation this evening.
All right, so as most of you already know, we have, which has started several years ago, our We Are VRS Initiative, which was a board law initiative, I want to say eight, nine years ago. And it provides opportunities for our students, for our community, for our staff to recognize other dedicated staff who go above and beyond to support our students and to support our school. This month, we had one of our students nominate and recognize Mr. Jack Varian, who's with us in the audience today. Mr. Varian is an extremely supportive classroom paraprofessional. He's been with us now for several years, and he's been working in our ERI program, and most notably with students who have some emotional and behavioral needs. They're some of our more challenging students. He's developed a wonderful rapport with all of the students that he's worked with. He's earned the respect of his colleagues. And he goes above and beyond to support his kids. Mr. V often volunteers at our after-school activities. I'd say that his favorite are the sporting activities where he gets to dominate the kids, especially volleyball, something special when he spikes the ball into a field of students. But, you know, most importantly, you know, he's being recognized for, you know, the little things that he does to make kids feel valued in school. So, thank you, Mr. V. We have a small token of our appreciation for you. Just hope you keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Right.
All right.
Still me?
Still your superintendent's report, please.
All right, so we have, since our last meeting, zero suspensions and one HIV investigation, which I am recommending, is founded. Number two, we had parent-teacher conferences during the week of March 3rd. Well-attended, both in person and virtually. One thing that you will see on the agenda for today is a recommendation to revise calendars for the 25, 26, and 26, 27 school year, both which were approved last month. The revision, which is being recommended, is to simply move parent-teacher conferences one week earlier than what we've traditionally done over the last few years. Reason for that is, we've recognized a conflict, two conflicts. One, Read Across America Week, which is an extremely busy week. It often, we often ask teachers sometimes to dress goofy and wear hats and pajamas, and it's not always easy for them to make a change of clothing to then look professional for when the parents come in. And it also conflicts with Ash Wednesday, and a lot of our parents and staff are trying to hustle to church and then back to the school. So by making it one week prior, we don't think that it's really going to have too much of an impact. It still gives the teachers the opportunity to meet with parents prior to report cards going out, which we feel is though is important. And unless anybody, excuse me, has any objections, that's my recommendation for the calendars that we've already approved. Kindergarten registration officially took place during our parent-teacher conferences a couple of weeks ago. That said, parents can still register their children for kindergarten at any time. They can do that online. But we do recommend that they do that as soon as they can. It allows us to create a more balanced, a more balanced classroom between the two classes, and it gives them opportunity to have information for orientation and kindergarten screening far in advance. Our, not on the report, but our preschool registration is very strong right now. We currently have 42 students registered for our preschool program for next year.
Fifty spots, correct?
We have 50 spots for general education students. Of the 42 currently, 36 of them are general education students. So we still technically have room for 14 more kids. As a reminder, this is a completely free to the parents of students in Stanhope. It's for three- and four-year-olds who are not quite eligible for kindergarten just yet. And it's, we're able to run this program because of the state aid that we've been provided, and that's something I'll get into a little bit when we talk more about budget. So, we sent our blast out. We got email information out. We have it on the marquee up front. Mr. Alm has a QR code, so parents can easily just jump right to the registration. But what has not happened yet is the town hasn't put out their NICSIL, which they're planning on doing in the next day or two. So there's a very good chance that we'll get additional students. Not all of these students will be educated here in Valley Road. We're partnering with the First Impressions Preschool on Linden Avenue, so they can house up to 30 students. We can keep up to 30 students, where we're leaving room for 20 in the general education, because we are required and obligated to educate students who are identified as having special needs or preschool disability. Okay? So that's really exciting. We shot for the moon when I requested 50 spaces, not knowing whether or not we'd get anywhere close to that. So I feel pretty good that we're in the ballpark right now. Career Day was last Friday. Thanks, thank you to everybody who presented. It was, again, very well-attended. We had a lot of very dynamic and a variety of careers and professions that students got to engage with. I wanted to also send a very special thanks out to Kathy Yankai, who coordinated and facilitated the program yet again. Mentioned Read Across America Week. That took place the week of March 3rd. As you can see, it was a very busy week. The events that took place included mystery readers, Reader's Theater. We had a reading train, door decorating contest. We actually had a special visit by Willy Wonka himself, which the little guys were very excited about. Wanted to thank Principal Di Cataldo and her committee of teachers who helped put that together. It really was a fun week. You know, if you have the opportunity and you're interested and you want to walk the halls after the meeting today, the doors are very beautifully decorated. And Ms. Di Cataldo and Ms. Capola did a nice job decorating the front entrance, which I'm sure you saw as you came through. We did a 100th Day Challenge. We're for the 100th Day to recognize it. We challenged students and the community to donate food items and household items that can be donated to the Waterloo Food Pantry. We are at over 400 total items that we've donated. They were very appreciative. Ms. Leon, who's a parent of a former student here, does a lot of charitable work through the Waterloo Food Pantry. You know, extended her deepest gratitude to our school and to our community. It was a lot of, a lot of the items that were donated are items that they don't normally get a lot of, so I think they were pretty excited about that. And then the last item that I have is just a reminder, if you haven't done so yet, to please complete your financial disclosure statement forms. Not due until April 30th, but it's always best to get them done as early as we can. That way, the business office can process everything they need to, and we can stop nagging you at all of our meetings. Our next meeting, our next public meeting isn't until April 30th. So this is the last time we'll be able to remind you guys at a public meeting. Okay? Any questions?
All right. Then that takes us to Mr. Velardo for Personnel, Curriculum, School Climate and Culture Committee meeting update.
Yeah, we discussed what Steve had just mentioned regarding changing the parent-teacher conferences. So we touched base on that. We have a list of some ESY programs for over the summer months that we went through, a list of some of the summer enrichment programs that the teachers will be putting on over the course of the summer that kids can register for. There's a long list of art and sports and all sorts of stuff, and we'll kind of see how registration goes for those, what will stay, what will go. Adjusting this 24, 25 school year calendar, given that we didn't, we only used one snow day, I believe, we have the opportunity to end the year on a Friday, June 13th, rather than what I think was going to be the Monday, which, you know, we all feel is beneficial for everybody.
That would require the board giving back one day, one fewer, one less student day, and one less day for staff coming in, which is not unprecedented. We've done it before.
Right. And we've met our requirements for the days in school and service, so... Is that, that's on the agenda this evening?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess we're still moving forward with Rutgers and working on the school climate improvement. We didn't really touch too much base on that, but...
I hope to be further along with that. The goal was to get this out late March. To be quite honest with you, with budget season and everything else, we're a little bit behind schedule. The hope is still to get it out in the spring so that we can really analyze the data into late spring in the summertime to make changes if deemed necessary for the next school year.
And, yeah, touch base on the Read Across America, Career Day, and I think that's really all to report, unless I'm missing something out of the box here.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Matt? All right, hearing no questions, that takes us to Mr. Yagnam for Business Services, Facilities, and Technology Committee update, please.
Just to mirror some of the things we heard, just to mirror some of the things we heard in the superintendent report, state aid, state aid numbers are not as high as expected. They're still pretty decent. So we're looking forward to move forward, forward with proceeding with future plans such as having the two classrooms here, the two classrooms off-site for preschool, which is fantastic. With facilities, they had a final walkthrough with our vendor for the door project, which I assume went well.
It went well. It went well in that we've really fine-tuned the quotes and have a really good grasp on the scope of work. It was three different companies who we walked through individually prior that we, that all came together, and we walked it together.
Okay. Still proceeding, which is great. We have renovations they decided we're going to do during spring break for the music room, which includes flooring and sound dampenings. So the other classrooms are not impacted. And that's basically it for Business Services.
Anybody have any questions? All right, hearing no questions, it stays with you for the Budget Committee report.
Next month, we're going to be getting a formal presentation. What it's coming down to is we're still going to proceed with hopefully adding one full-time math teacher, transitioning art to full-time, and adding one full-time special ed for next year. I believe this is going to be a great benefit to the school and just adding in core positions such as math. So I believe today we're going to also hear from Steve about that, and next month we're going to get more of a formal presentation from Dan.
Anybody with questions, comments? All right, that takes us to the Sussex County Education Services Commission update.
I provide an update there?
Yes, please.
So, so I think it's obvious that we do not have yet a representative to regularly attend these meetings, which is understandable. It is a time commitment. I do want to put out there, though, that they are requesting that, mandating, I use that term loosely, that somebody from our district attend their April 7th meeting, which I believe is a reorganization. They follow a different schedule than us. It wouldn't commit anybody to attending these meetings regularly or monthly, but if there is anybody that's available...
So I'm going to, I'm going to attend. I just need to know where and what time.
I will get you that information. Actually, their superintendent reached out to me today and asked if we had somebody that would be able to. I'll get her...
I believe Mrs. Sharfstein, Mrs. Harold, and I are going to round robin to attend, to represent Stanhope.
That would be great. That'd be great. Thank you. I'll let her know. And I'll actually, what I'll do is I'll respond to her via email and copy all three of you so that she can send details directly.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to the Board President's report. In light of Matia not being here, she did send an email, so I'm going to go ahead and read this. And she says, "Although I am unable to attend this evening's meeting, I want to express my full support for the budget recommendations prepared by our business administrator and presented by Superintendent Hegman." In a little bit, we'll have that. "This budget reflects a responsible and strategic investment in our district, including increases to staff that will directly benefit our students, especially within our middle school community. These additions will strengthen our ability to support student success while maintaining financial stability. I also strongly support the proposed safety and security upgrades, including replacing all doors and installing card swipe lock mechanisms. The safety of our students and staff is the top priority, and these improvements will significantly enhance building security and emergency preparedness. I appreciate the hard work of our administration and all stakeholders in shaping these plans, and I thank the board and community for the continued support of these essential initiatives outlined in our strategic plan. Thank you for your dedication to our district's success. Sincerely, Matia Sharfstein." Other than me possibly holding up a sign of Tia's face that I did not prepare, that is the end of the President's report. Takes us to public session number one for agenda items. Seeing no public, we can't hear any public. That takes us to executive session. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
That's the one I have to read, right? All right. "Be it resolved that the Stanhope Board of Education adopts the following resolution. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Stanhope Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Stanhope Board of Education, County of Sussex, and State of New Jersey, that a closed session of this Board of Education, where the public shall be excluded, will be held at this time for the purpose of student confidentiality. Be it further resolved that the action of the Board with regard to the above entitled matter shall be disclosed to the public at a later date, and to the extent that the same is not prejudicial to the interests of the parties involved and would not result in a possible invasion of their right to privacy." The voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody no? Anybody abstain? All right, that takes us into public session, I mean, executive session. Can I get a motion to re-enter public session?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
The time is 7:26. Thank you. All right. All in favor of re-entering public session, say aye.
Aye.
Any no's, any abstains? All right, that takes us to travel and workshop reports. Give you a minute to look that over. Anyone with any questions? All right. Minutes for approval on agenda items one to three. Can I get a motion, please?
No moves.
Second?
Second.
All right, and a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to abstain from number one.
Okay.
But, yes, to two and three.
Any no's?
Time's charm on that executive.
There we go. All right, that takes us to the 2025, 2026 Budget Adoption, Agenda Items 1 through 8.
I'll go through a brief description once we get motions.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
So as Mr. Yagnam mentioned on the business, I'm sorry, the Budget Committee report, I'm going to give a brief overview of our budget as we will be submitting to the county office. And Mr. Borgo, our business administrator, will be here at our April 30th meeting to give a more comprehensive presentation. You may or may, it's up to you if you want to turn around. I'm going to speak to all of the points. I'm very sorry. So, some of the key highlights of our upcoming budget is that we're going to be able to continue the shared service contracts that we currently have. Shared services is a way for us to keep our costs down so that we don't have to use private contracted providers who charge an exorbitant amount of money. It also allows us to hire quality staff for full-time positions when we don't necessarily have a full-time need. On that agenda, actually, today, you'll see the shared service agreement for our physical therapist. We really need a physical therapist six to eight hours per week, which you're either going to have a lot of difficulty hiring your person, or you're going to spend a lot of money on a contracted professional. Because we've successfully partnered previously with Net Kong, Lenape Valley, and Mount Olive for next year, replacing Mount Olive with Byram, we've been able to bring in a wonderful, full-time physical therapist that we share between all of the districts, and it's been working out great, and it helps us keep our costs down. We share our building and ground supervisor with Byram and a speech pathologist with Lenape Valley. We also currently have a shared service for an LDTC, which a child study team, is a child study team position. We're honestly unsure, we don't currently have it budgeted to continue that shared service because of some concerns that we have regarding proper and adequate payment of these services. We are not 100% fully caught up where the other district has ultimately paid the salary and benefits for the employee. So we're anticipating severing that shared service, but that could possibly change as we go down the road. We did have a state aid increase this year of 86,000. We did have a state aid increase this year of eighty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It's a six percent on the dot increase from our state aid from the previous year. Last year, we received a thirty percent increase in the amount of about three hundred and thirty thousand. So this is an okay number for us, except if you factor in that all districts that received additional state aid this year in New Jersey were actually capped at six percent increase. The frustrating part of this is, you know, for the five years that we were losing state aid, we weren't capped. We were losing over a hundred thousand dollars for a few of those years. And now that we're gaining state aid because we are at about a fifteen percent increase in student population, we're capped and our growth was restricted. If we were not capped, we would have received about five hundred and fifty thousand additional dollars in state aid.
So. I was going to say, I know that we have, the student numbers are increasing. I was at a local get-together and they were talking about how the fifth grade has had quite a few students come in recently, so like what does this mean in terms of like the number of students increasing versus?
So students, from a budgetary and state aid perspective, more students is a good thing because we receive funding for these students.
But you just said we were capped at six percent.
We and every other school district in the state were capped at six percent. That said, there's still still districts that are losing money. What the state put out to us was, in a memo, that no district would lose more than three percent. They didn't say anything about the increase, the cap for the increase. My assumption is that the cap on increases is what they're doing to pay for the cap on the decreases. The end of the day, we're still in very good shape. What those dollars would have been, it would have been a tax levy savings, right? We could have potentially decreased the amount of money that we are taking from the taxpayer. So I don't, I don't want to cry about this because we're still able to do all of the things that we proposed doing when we initially met for our budget. But when you consider how much money could have, could have been coming into the district, it's a little frustrating when you do have that many more students than what you had two years ago.
I was going to say, I just know that our numbers are up a pretty significant amount.
Yep.
Especially with the preschool now, that's another. Yeah.
So another reason why you won't hear us cry poverty is because we were fully funded for our preschool program in the amount of just over eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Now, you'll see last year's amount at just under a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. The reason that it's so significantly higher is because we're adding two classrooms and thirty students. That money does not directly come to our district in that we're ultimately paying the tuition for up to thirty students to attend the First Impressions preschool at Linden Avenue. We will receive some financial benefit from that in the amount of about two thousand dollars per student.
Right, but also remember, we're funding three classrooms. That budget didn't include.
Correct.
Yes.
So that one fifty-three was only for one classroom of ten students. So, you know, although we are sending First Impressions that tuition, we do receive or hold on to some of that money to help offset our expenses, a lot of which are preschool related. But the added benefit there is we have this thirty students who will be getting a free public education from certified schoolteachers that would not have otherwise, right? So it's offsetting the financial burden to the parents and it's providing a service that, you know, a lot of, a lot of preschools or daycares don't have certificated teachers. They're not able to pay those teachers what a certificated teacher, you know, should be making. So it's really a win for our district. It also allows us to offset a lot of our general expenses. Administrator salaries are partially being paid through that. Secretarial salaries, custodians, utilities. So it allows us to pull money from our general fund or at least put money back into our general fund so that we can support a lot of the other initiatives that we want to support. So, if you look at the fourth bullet, the increase in staff, and I think this is particularly important to consider, I'm going to skip that for just a minute and I'm going to go down to the next bullet where we have a total tax increase of about four point one-two percent. This includes our debt service, so this includes the referendum monies that the town approved for us to upgrade our facilities. Last year, for debt service and the tax levy increase, we were at three point four-two percent. This is very comparable to a lot of the schools in the area and it's significantly less than some, you know, of the schools in our general region. But the reason I wanted to jump to that bullet before the previous one is most of the schools who are at a four to six percent increase are doing that while maintaining programming. They're maintaining staff, there's really no added benefit. We're looking to add two point six staff members to support programming that we don't currently have. One of which would be an additional full-time middle school math teacher so that we could support a double math period in grade six, seventh, and eighth grade. This is something that a lot of districts, I shouldn't say, that some districts have had for a period of time and it's been considered a luxury. As a former middle school math teacher, I wouldn't go as far as saying it's a luxury because I know how much more we'll be able to accomplish by doubling the amount of time that our students are spending in a math class. So that's why we'll be looking to add one full-time math teacher. The increase of a full-time special education teacher is twofold. One, I would say half of that position is to support the increase in specials teachers. Our STEM teacher is currently teaching STEM and special education. We want to take the special education responsibilities off of her so that we can increase the amount of time that our middle school students spend in STEM. And the other half of that would be by doubling math in middle school, we also have to double the pullout resource math classes that are also being offered in middle school. So that teacher is to compensate for those two things. And then, you know, I mentioned an increase in STEM, who's currently a full-time position, but increasing our art and music positions from seventy percent of full-time. So that's a thirty percent increase in salary for both plus benefits. This is going to allow all of this for a more comprehensive middle school experience for our students, which to be honest with you, has been an initiative of the board for eleven years. Since I, you know, was hired here as building principal eleven years ago, you know, that's, this is to me, this is the last real piece of it, right? We've added lockers, we've treated them more like middle school kids, we've done a lot of the middle school things. This is that last piece that's really going to boost us academically, I'm very excited about it. The other nice thing about that, you know, for those of you who were here and participated in our strategic planning process a couple of years ago, these are all direct reflections of what the community told us they wanted. They wanted increased amount of art, music, STEM. They wanted student choice, which we'll be able to incorporate with these new positions. And they wanted our middle school students to feel like middle school students rather than it being an extension of an elementary school. So very excited about that.
So.
Yes, go ahead.
Does that mean, since you're talking about double math, does that mean you're going to eliminate the EHA period that the kids currently have?
We are not going to eliminate it. It will be shortened.
Okay.
From, again, so this is a proposed schedule based on the approval and acceptance of the budget that we're moving forward. So I anticipate that going from a forty-minute period to a twenty-five-minute period, still allowing the kids the opportunity. The main purpose of the EHA, I know kids think it's to do homework, it's not.
I was going to say that's.
It's to have access to their teachers, right? So during that EHA time, a middle school teacher has access to their math teacher, their language arts teacher, their science teacher, their social studies teacher in case they need additional help. Some students take advantage of this. I'd say the majority probably do not. A lot of students are able to complete their homework during that time, but that's not what it's for. We use that time for pullouts as well. We pull out for band, for speech, for OT, for PT, for RTI so that the kids aren't as negatively impacted by missing other classes. So we will, we do plan to keep an EHA period. One thing that I think many students will be happy about and some will not be is the removal of recess for middle school students. To be quite honest with you, it's something that we've done, we've done it successfully. Some kids didn't like it, some kids loved it because it creates a longer lunch for them so that they don't have to rush and eat, they have more time to socialize in the cafeteria. But it also falls in line with a more traditional, comprehensive middle school. Middle schools who are not K eights, standalone middle schools, don't have recess. I understand the importance of activity, you know, in kids moving, but we also offer more minutes in physical education than are required as well. So they are getting more of that. And then other than those changes, it'll be a decrease in two minutes per period, which is not a significant decrease. So our periods right now are forty-one minutes long. The periods will be thirty-nine minutes long. But again, you now have the double math with the double language arts.
Fabulous.
A lot of increased collaboration time for our teachers. We're going to be able to create more of a department feel. Special education teachers, which they haven't in the past, will have opportunities to collaborate with the general education teachers to, you know, just more effectively modify work for students with needs. And I really see it as a really significant improvement over the current schedule that we have. The tax levy increase on a home assessed at just under two hundred thousand dollars would be a yearly impact of a hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-three cents. Important to note that the tax assessment is not a home's value, right? The way that homes are selling in this town, they're selling way over the tax assessed value. It's on that little card that you get that tells you, you know, what your taxes are. That's the value that we're talking about here. Anybody have questions before I go to the next slide?
If I can just make a comment on your last.
Sorry.
If you look at year over year, what we're currently paying, it's a minimal increase and we're getting two and a half extra teachers, full-time music, an extra math teacher. We get to continue to move forward with our door project. They're using the money smartly in capital reserves that we have to spend anyway towards that services. Everything is really healthy and it's trending, so while the other schools are just trying to maintain, even in some situations at a higher levy, we, the taxpayers shouldn't feel that much on an annual basis. I know the percentage is what stands out right away, but a year over years, it's minimal and in my opinion, to each their own though.
And remember that, that increase, the hundred thirty-four dollar increase, that's inclusive of the debt service, right, that was passed through the referendum. We did not, so when we passed that referendum, there was still no more than a two percent that year increase in the tax levy because we planned that and scheduled that immediately after the previous debt service fell off, right? So twenty years ago, we completed the addition of the gym and the front of the building. That was paid off in twenty years and we just kind of rolled on top of that.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the preschool, you said, are we going to send thirty more students to the preschool?
So we, the way that we have it structured next year, we're going to have two classes here and two classes at First Impressions, which is on Linden Avenue.
Which will consist of thirty kids at the same time?
So, in two different classes.
Coming but going to the school at the same time.
Correct.
The reason why I question that is because right now, when they're going, coming in the morning and going in the afternoon, they park on both sides of the street and the one side says no parking and you can't get a car. I'm more concerned about the increased traffic because they don't have any parking.
So what I'll tell you is, a good number of the kids who are already in that school are Stanhope residents, who are, their parents are paying for them to go there. They'll stay there and the parents just won't have to pay anymore.
I'm talking about the additional kids.
So I'm saying though, that although there will be additional kids, it won't necessarily be thirty additional because a lot of them are probably already in school there.
That's what I wanted to get clear in my mind because I was getting nervous. Because I go down that road every morning and every afternoon.
I'm not saying that there won't be an increase in traffic.
Yeah.
But it may not be as significant as, as you're concerned about.
On the last thing, on the assessment, I understand that I think sometime this year or early next year, the town's going to do reassessment. So that might, everything might change on that.
It could.
Yeah, they are scheduled to do reassessments.
I can hear you.
They are scheduled to do reassessments.
That was my understanding. Okay, thanks.
So, how we're going to be paying for all the things that we're looking to fit into our budget. So as we've discussed several times here at our board meetings, we are eligible for adjustments, which is an allowance for us to go over that two percent tax levy cap. Our enrollment adjustment, we're eligible for about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but we're only looking to use about three hundred thousand of it. Our state aid was increased just over eighty-six thousand. And as I stated, the budget reflects our expenditures and our revenues. So remember, in addition to the tax levy, we have a pretty healthy and comprehensive tuition program where we have special needs programs where several districts from the area send kids here and they pay us to educate their children. We're able to do that at a minimal cost increase to our budget because these programs are existing. We already have the teachers, in some cases, we already have the aides, we have the furniture, we have the curricular resources, so it's students coming here and we're being compensated for that. We talked about the increase in teachers. Banked cap for the following year is at four hundred seventy-one thousand. And even after we use capital reserve funds to pay down some of the debt service to minimize the increase to the tax levy and complete our door project, we still expect to have about a million dollars left in capital reserve, which is a very healthy number, and still about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars left in our maintenance reserve. So maintenance reserve can be used in case of an emergency. The nice thing about our current situation is, our building's practically brand new, right? So the chances of needing an emergency boiler repair or, you know, HVAC repair or a roof repair is very slim, but if we need it, we have plenty of money available for us to do. Questions before I move on to the last slide? So again, just to reiterate and restate, increases for the year on a tax assessed house of just under two hundred thousand is a hundred and thirty-four dollars. If you broke that out to monthly, it's about eleven dollars per month increase. And again, you're looking at an increase regardless, right? You know, whether it's two percent or four percent. So that's, that's what we're looking at and that's just for Stanhope School District, which is separate from the Lenape Valley School District. Questions? Like I said, a more comprehensive presentation will be held at our April meeting, at which point the board will be required to vote on, not just the acceptance of the budget, but approving the adjustments that we're looking to take to support the budget.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for your hard work. I think it's fabulous, all the things we're going to be able to do. And as somebody who was here when they had to take the full-time art and music and cut it to fifty percent, it's been a long time coming, slowly but surely, to be able to get it back to full-time with benefits is fantastic. So thanks, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Well, good, I like it over there better. All right, so with that presentation, if there are no more questions on that, we need a motion to adopt the budget adoption for twenty-five, twenty-six, agenda items one to eight.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Any other?
We're good. Anybody have questions before we do a roll call vote? Okay.
Mrs. Bottalotto?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That takes us to administrative action item, agenda item number one. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Bottalotto?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Motion's carrying.
Okay, that takes us to policy action items, agenda items one to four, and they are all second readings on the policies. Can we have a motion, please?
No moves.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Not hearing any questions, that takes us to a roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottalotto?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Motion's carrying.
Moving right along to education action items, agenda items one to six. This is school trips, the revised calendar, date changes for parent-teacher conferences. date changes for parent-teacher conferences, extended school year program and the summer enrichment program. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Mrs. Badalato?
Yes.
Mr. Fdakar? I'm sorry, Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Thank you.
That takes us to personnel action items, agenda items one and two. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
And this shows substitute nurse and then also the programs that are proposed for the summer enrichment program. Anybody have any questions?
Just a comment, these are exciting programs. And I'd like to thank the staff that volunteered time throughout their summer to also do this. I wouldn't say volunteer.
It is, they are paid programs. The first year we did it this way, last year, we were initially given federal funding through COVID to run these programs for free. They were very successful. And this is an opportunity for teachers to run things that they're passionate about and they excel in. At what I think is a minimal cost to the parents. The district is not charging for facilities, the district is not charging extra to utilize insurance. It's strictly the cost to compensate the teachers and to pay for materials and resources that they may need for the program.
They were excellent last year, so I was super excited to see an even more built-out program for this year.
And, you know, whether or not all of these move forward will depend on whether or not they get enough people registered. My hope is to get registration links out by the end of this week. I was hoping to be ready to send it out first thing tomorrow. It's been a busy week, it's just a matter of building those links and getting everything done. Maybe with a late night tonight, I can get it done, but hopefully by the end of the week.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not hearing any, can we have a roll call vote?
Sure, Mrs. Badalato?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
That takes us to business services action items, agenda items one to 13, with an addendum for items 14 to 17. I'll give you a minute to look that over. Can we get a motion? Anyone with questions, comments, concerns?
I just wanna point out that we have number seven, a new student who started with us in our ERI program. Transition has been quite successful over the first week or so. And it is expected that the student will remain with us through next year.
And then on number 15, you'll note that the company that chose them for the door project.
It's 15 and 16.
Sorry, yes.
15 is the actual doors and the hardware, and 16 is the installation of the electronic swipes and the network services that go along with that. And remember too, I just wanna note that for that, that's not only the interior doors, we're also having all of the exterior card readers replaced and updated with improved and increased security features.
Is frontline gonna be the, I'm assuming that's initial startup costs and then there'll be an annual?
About half of it is the initial startup costs. It's about $10,000, $10,000 to $11,000 annually. It's to replace real-time, which is our current IEP management program. The yearly expense is about double. It does offer a lot more for our team. It has a component, a platform for 504 plans, which is not something that we currently have. But the main reason we wanted to explore this platform, aside from it being easier to use from a user perspective, Lenape, Byram and Net Kong all use this platform. And it just makes it a lot easier to have greater consistency as kids move from our district into Lenape. Net Kong and Byram students who have IEPs, they're able to very easily transfer through the platform into Lenape's platform. Whereas when Lenape accepts our kids, it's a whole process of manually entering all of the data from those IEPs, which in some cases are, you know, 11 years worth of data. So it's, it was time. I honestly don't know exactly why we haven't made this transition sooner. I think it probably had more to do with the fact that we had very tight budgets at that time. And we're just very fortunate right now that we're in a very good position to make this change.
And the first year's included in that?
Yes, so the 21,898 is startup costs, prorated costs for April, May and June of this year. Because we're gonna have an overlap because it's gonna be a two, two or three month process of transferring data and then all of next year.
And also, don't forget, our tuition in students that we're getting from mostly the regional districts will be able to transfer those things back and forth also.
It's a more widely used program, mostly because it's just more user-friendly.
Anybody with any other questions, comments? Not hearing any, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure, Mrs. Badalato?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Well, motion's carried.
That takes us to new business. Anybody with new business? Not hearing any new business, anybody with old business?
I just wanted to thank Matt, I was really excited, my daughter came home with a flyer. I see that the first annual Chargers challenge, great flyer, I like the image, who did that for you?
The HSA took control of that.
Kudos to you guys, looks awesome. That's gonna be on Saturday, May 31st. I, thank you, Matt, this is gonna be great.
Yeah, it's exciting, Matt. The HSA, they've been doing their part wonderfully, I'm excited to have it. Thanks to Steve as well for all his help and you guys, so look forward to it.
Anybody else on old business? Not hearing any, that takes us to public session number two, non-agenda items. Having no public. That takes us to adjournment, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Check it.
Okay, voice vote, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Any notes, any abstentions?
We are adjourned.